Welcome everybody to the regular school committee meeting. Today is February 10th and we're calling this meeting at 6:05. Roll call please, Ms. Feliciano.
Mayra Garcia?
Here.
Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan?
Present.
Ms. LaFave? Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Present.
Mr. Isasa?
Here.
Mr. Willihan?
Here.
Mr. Colomar?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
We'll have a student lead for our pledge of allegiance tonight. Her name is Maya, please come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. First on March 29, 2023, Governor Healey signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31, 2023 to March 31, 2025. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and that the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the City's Community TV channel. Welcome everybody, we have another awesome treat tonight. We would like to welcome Metcalf Middle School.
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask our principal, Ms. Burke, to come up and talk a little bit about the Play Ball Foundation. This is actually, I can talk a little bit about the Play Ball Foundation. We do have a partnership with them. Their focus is really around middle school sports and we're able to do basketball, flag football, and volleyball is another sport. Last year, Metcalf actually won the championship over at the Boys Club and we're showcasing the current year team today.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us. As you said, my name is Katie Burke. I have the honor of being the principal of Metcalf Middle School this year. I'd also like to introduce the assistant principal, Mrs. Mary Seaplick. Our DMO, Siobhan Brennan is here tonight, as well as one of our coaches, Ms. O'Hare. And then of course, our amazing students, who you will hear from in just a moment. We thought we would take this opportunity to showcase some of our students. We talk a lot about the middle school experience and how important these after-school activities are for middle school. And this partnership we have with the Boys and Girls Club throughout these sports has really given these students a sense of belonging. They have created such meaningful relationships with some of the staff at our school and they're just engaging in real positive, non-academic experiences. And they are known throughout our school and I, you know, really just applaud them. We're very proud of them and the work that they do. And they're gonna talk a little bit about there are some components of school and grades that are connected to them playing on this team, which you'll hear from them tonight. But they are the most exciting part of tonight. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to our team.
My name is Maya Yates and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Dominique Gradgerius and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Damian Padilla and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Adrian Navarro, I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Malakaya Gudelo and I'm in 6th grade.
My name is Nicholas Acevedo and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Katsiel Rivera and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Treziah Gill and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Adrian Adour and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Adrian Adias and I'm in 7th grade.
What basketball means to us.
Basketball isn't just a game, it's a bond that runs deep.
We support each other on and off the court. The lessons we learned, we learned go beyond the game.
Respect for teammates, coaches, opponents, and referees. Learning how to handle wins and losses.
Our coaches emphasized how important this is, preparing for next year when STEM and Metcalf combine.
Learning to trust and rely on each other.
How our bond help us on and off the court. I like how my teammates and my coaches help me feel included and they're always positive.
Basketball gives us structure. It pushes us to do better in school and in life. A requirement to be on this team is obviously to have a C as a minimum to be able to play. And this causes the students to give an effort to actually be able to both focus on school and for the team. Our coaches always tell us, don't get mad, get better. Basketball contract, behavior grades, and showing up for practice and games. So basically, um, so basically in that, it's, um, we have to, we signed a contract so we could do good in the games and if we do bad or like bad grades, that's what I mean. If we do bad for that, we'll be pulled out of the team and we'll have to, and if we want like other people on our team, they could show up and support our team and maybe get back on the team. Um, I'm the hype man for this team. Like, losing the chance to play was hard. Showed up for the games anyways. Basketball has helped me realize the importance of school and behaviors. I am working hard to bring my grades up and control my behaviors. And also, I'm just, yeah, I've been trying hard. I'm hoping to play in the playoffs this year. Trying to make it, trying to get Metcalf another championship. Thank you to the school committee, teachers, and coaches. We are proud to represent our school. Thank you for the chance to let us represent Metcalf and good night to you guys.
Ms. Wilson?
So I have some questions. I mean, how did, so anyone could answer these from the group, but you need to come to the microphone, sorry. So, um, my first question is, did you have to try out for the program? And if so, what was that like? So whoever wants to answer that, feel free to go to the microphone.
So yes, there was tryouts and it was pretty hard because like there was a lot of kids that wanted to play basketball and some of them didn't get the chance to do it because of their grades and their behavior.
Thank you. Say, anyone else want to add to that or is that? Someone else will?
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Thank you guys for coming tonight. One thing that's going to help your team, respect. Love that, that bond that you have. Just stay in there, hang in there with each other. I'm very excited about this right now, okay? I might just jump up and be a vuela, grandma, okay? So you guys just, you have respect for each other. You have each other's back, that's the main thing. And you can do it. Always remember that, no matter what is going on around you, you're in charge of you. Okay, so come again, alright? We love you. Dios te bendiga, God bless you.
Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Hi, I just wanna ask, have you, for some of the youth who said that, you said that came for the tryout, didn't get picked because of their grades. Have you reached out to them and say, how you doing? Have you made an improvement? How can, you know, so that the next round, that they can feel that they can take a chance at it again? Has anybody, anyone has reached out to one of them? Have you seen there? And if you haven't, I encourage you to do so. I think peer-to-peer is the best way that you can encourage people to stay on track.
Actually, they have talked to me about stuff. They gave me another chance to get back on the team. If I've been fixing my grades, I've been trying hard in school, you know, to get back on the team. And yeah.
Good, thank you, appreciate it. That's called peer-to-peer when you help your peers, thank you.
Mr. Colomar?
Can I add a little bit to that? Cause I, I am proud of the team and Adrian because we talk a lot about in school with our academics about persistence and grit, right? And you have to show up and you can't give up. And Adrian is showing that persistence and grit with his grades. He's also showing up to practice. He shows up to every game to cheer his team on and he is working really hard to earn back the opportunity to play. And so he is really embodying those qualities and we're really important of him. And I'm also proud of his teammates for consistently being like a positive, also cheering him on and not giving up on him and his coaches too, so.
What's his name again?
His name is Adrian.
Adrian, if it'll help you, I will pray for you, okay?
Mr. Colomar?
Boys and girls and teachers, thank you. Thank you very much for this wonderful presentation. I just wanted to let you know that history of sports started here in Hoyoke, Massachusetts with the Volleyball Hall of Fame. Then came along with basketball, which is right off of the Interstate 90. Then you go a little bit farther into New York and you have the Boxing Hall of Fame. And then you go a little bit farther and you have skating and hockey Hall of Fame. That's in New York, I'm sorry, that's in Canada. That goes over right into Canada, Toronto. And it's a wonderful, wonderful experience to just travel our highway, Mass Turnpike, all to these wonderful sporting places throughout the world. So keep in mind that right here in Hoyoke, Massachusetts, on the Mass Turnpike, this is where it all began on your way to sports, so keep up the good work.
Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for bravely coming up and talking and representing your school. And I gotta say, my favorite part of the presentation was that you learn lessons on the court and off the court. As, you know, when I was a kid, I wanted to play in the NBA. I wasn't good enough, but I learned so much as a kid through my coaches, through my experiences, missing that last shot or having a teammate miss that last shot. And those experiences allowed me to learn and then apply what I learned in real life. Till this day, I work in a team environment. These are my teammates here and we tackle issues together and we make mistakes and we pick each other up and we move forward. And I just want to encourage you to, to really apply that. Like, these lessons that you're learning right now are lessons that you'll carry throughout your life. You know, whatever you're learning in the game of basketball that's keeping you engaged in basketball, you can apply to your learning in school and you'll be able to apply even when you get older and you join either college or the workforce or whatever it is you choose to do. These little things that you're learning are so important. So keep at it, keep moving.
Mayra Garcia?
Thank you. And to add to all of this too, and just so that the school committee knows and everyone at home, the Play Ball Foundation and this partnership they have with the Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club and the Hoyoke Public Schools, they've been doing this for a couple of years now. And my son, who goes to Sullivan, has been participating as well. This is an amazing partnership that we have going on within our school district, the middle schools. We don't really have, for a while actually, that kind of intramural sports between our middle schools. And it's not just, we have other middle schools too that come over and participate and play with our, with our kids. Our local Catholic schools, I believe Charter even participated in the intramurals. And we, you know, just to have that space to allow our, our, our children in the school, in our municipality to be able to cross-play with other schools, what a fantastic platform that this partnership has been able to give. And I hope that we can continue to strengthen that partnership and support it. The Boys and Girls Club, although great, space has been extremely limited. If we can elevate and maybe even move this into our high school gym so that parents can actually stay and watch these games, parents. Or the new pack, cause parents aren't a lot, because the space is so limited, they, they make parents watch streaming at home, which is fine. But still, we want to be there and cheer on our kids. But I do appreciate this partnership. So shout out to the Play Ball Foundation, Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club for, you know, being a supporter of our middle school kids. And I'm just so thrilled to see that, how excited these kids get when there is an opportunity to play in these sports. I see, I, I know because I see it through my son at home and, and hearing it from each of you makes me feel and know that this, it's working. So need to keep kind of supporting that. And I wish each and one of you the best of luck as you continue to, to, to navigate this, this middle school experience and into your high school and this world we call life, so congratulations, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
So two things struck me. When you started talking about, Mr. Soto started talking about teamwork. I remember after I graduated from college, I, I told my teachers and my coaches, half of what I've learned that I'm gonna take the rest of my life is what I learned in sports. Learning how to pick yourself up after devastating losses, how to encourage each other. And what I've noticed that you've done is you've all clapped for each other and for us. And that is a true sense of building that team. And so I coach, you know, two programs here in Hoyoke for youth sports. And I admire the teamwork that you're showing and the fact that you are supporting one another. And I wanted to recognize that because that is truly one of the essential functions of a team, is that you support one another in the good and the bad. So great job, everyone.
Ms. Wilson?
I mean.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Sorry.
When I was in the Air Force, I traveled. And number one was on my uniform, I was in volleyball. And I wrote a poem for you guys, I'm gonna make it real quick. It's called "Coloring Books." Have you ever wondered why coloring books are so much fun? It could be when you color, the crayons do not run. Coloring books have so many pictures and lots of things to do. The crayon colors that you use, they are so pretty too. Coloring books come in all sizes. Some are large and some are small. When you finish coloring the pictures, you may frame them for your wall. When coloring time is over and you put the books away, put them where you can find them to color another day. And you can frame them after you color. Put them on your wall. And I'll be going into the school when the cold gets over and I'll be helping the kids and I'll be showing you how to do it, okay? God bless you guys, we love you so much. I wanna cry.
Mr. Colomar?
Yes, just one thing I didn't mention. Here in Hoyoke, basketball was one of the top games in the world at the time. This was 1958. And the Boston Celtics came here and played at the City Hall in Hoyoke. A basketball game against Hoyoke High School and Westfield State. They just picked up a team and played the Boston Celtics in 1958. And that started me in my career in refereeing. And I started refereeing the Celtics game there at the City Hall. And I went into the service and I refereed over in Germany and France and Italy. Then I came back here and I started, did more refereeing, colleges and high school throughout the world. I traveled, just officiating in sports. And that's part of growing up and learning what you want to do in life and you're gonna go a long way. So continue your sports and continue your endeavor wherever you want to go.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being brave and speaking to all of us even though you don't necessarily know us. I will say that we are here for you. So if you ever need anything in the future, that's the same door that you come through and then you come and speak and sign up for public comment and you let us know what you need. Don't forget about us because we're here and we work for you. So please, don't, don't forget. Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, I was also just gonna say that when you get to high school, you have amazing opportunities to speak in front of the school committee and make your opinions very heard.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Ms. Feliciano, do we have any public comment?
No.
Moving on to communications and reports, student reports. For Dean Campus, Mr. Kennedy?
So the North Campus isn't here, but I would like to give a huge shout out to their theater program. I saw a couple, they just finished up their second show, I believe, The Lord of the Flies. And I've seen a couple of their shows and I don't know what I was expecting when I was going into it, but it was definitely not that. They are amazing and I just think that they should get a huge, huge shout out. They are just amazing. But yes. Okay. Dean updates. Wrestling, won against Putnam for senior night, so a huge congratulations to the wrestling team for yet another victory. Next, Dean Campus Student Council joined forces with Hoyoke High School Theater Program with a bake sale to raise money for Dean as well as the theater department. Yet again this year, Vacation Academy is on track with full staffing and students ready to participate. This program is being coordinated by Ms. Maya Rodriguez and our teaching team this year is Mr. Cade Sandimerzky, who will be providing ELA instruction, and Ms. Christine LaRue, who will be instructing cosmetology during the week. I brought this up last year, I think it was April of last year, where students have the opportunity to buy back attendance if they're chronically absent. And what we are trying to do is provide, you know, a chance for them to learn academically, but also since we're a vocational program, we throw a shop in there so that they can also have a little bit of, you know, enjoyable skills to learn. Last year, we did math with Ms. Bardwell and cosmetology with Ms. LaRue. This year, it'll be English and cosmetology. I was one of the employees of that program last year and it was a pretty good time, I'd say. And finally, the St. Patrick's Day Colleen float is in the building and our carpentry students have been joining the workers to join, to share their skills. And that is all.
Thank you so much. We don't have a representative from Hoyoke High School North online either, right? Just wanna make sure, okay? Well, moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I have a few items in your packet. One of them being the proposed competency determination policy that I'm hopeful eventually it could be taken up at one of your subcommittees. And our team, our academics team and Dr. Mahoney and some counselors, we solicited some feedback from different stakeholder groups. We got some input from our teacher advisory group. We got some input from the counselors at each of the high schools. And for this year, you know, the, the highlights of the, what we're proposing is that now that MCAS is no longer competent, used for competency determination at, at the state level, what they are requiring is for local communities to come up with their own competency determination. There is at least one district that I know of that is using MCAS as like, we're gonna continue to use MCAS as that competency determination. What we had decided to propose is that students that receive a passing grade in both Grade 9 and Grade 10 English courses or the course equivalent determined by the school principal and approved by the superintendent, that in combination with a passing grade in Algebra 1 and geometry, geometry courses, and then also receiving a passing grade in Biology, that, that, those combinations would then be used to determine competency determination. So I think that, you know, one of the things that I'd, I'd like to do is, is hopefully go into deeper discussion at a subcommittee meeting where we can, you know, we can dive deeper into any questions that the school committee would have. But ultimately, we are looking for this year for the school committee to adopt a competency determination policy.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Mr. Soto, when the kids get a certificate instead of a diploma, when they graduate, how hard is it for them to get a job?
It all depends on where they're trying to work. It's, it's hard to answer that question because some jobs.
Most kids want a diploma.
Yeah.
Tough, but if they keep the grades up, they'll get the diploma. Thank you.
Ms. Sheehan?
So how many students would be impacted by this new competency determination for this academic year, which would impact the class of 25?
I think part of, part of why we are putting this in front of you is because we want students to know what the competency determination is gonna be for this year. Some of the students that had already, you know, passed, actually wouldn't know if they received the passing. Well, students that received the passing grade, like they wouldn't have to worry about, about this new competency determination policy. But specifically for our seniors, I don't know that we have, we have numbers. Dr. Mahoney, do, do we have numbers on like?
You don't have it, I don't have a firm number.
Okay, we have numbers. I mean, you have to have the number of how many students haven't passed the MCAS that are seniors.
Yes, I'm saying I don't have them here tonight.
Okay, can we bring that stuff in the future when we're discussing these types? Like, it seems like there's a lot of stuff we have to bring back, like, that seems like it would be a question that would be asked, how many people this would impact? So if we can bring that data or have someone here who can pull that data, that would be helpful just to know. I mean, this could be something that has to be determined in two weeks or does it have to be determined in two months and that changes that?
Yeah, I expected to have that in, in subcommittee, but like, I will definitely make sure that we come with, even though we anticipate more discussion in subcommittee, I'll be, I'll, I'll try to anticipate the question.
I mean, it would just help because Ms. Wilson's committee maybe couldn't take it up until June, but there's other committees that could take it up. Like, we have to know some of this information to send it to the right subcommittee.
Mr. Rollahan?
Thank you. I'd just like to make the motion to refer this topic to the Leadership and Accountability, Accountability Subcommittee.
Motion made by Mr. Rollahan, seconded by Ms. Tansley-Williams. Discussion? Ms. Wilson?
So first I have to say it's not a policy because only the school committee can create policies. So I, I just-
That's what we want.
Right, so I'm just-
We want you to create a policy.
Yeah, so, um, and so this is just for this year? Is the, what you're recommending, is it just for this group of seniors?
I think the most urgent thing we need to decide is what are we doing for this year? And I anticipate that the state is working on further guidance that will either support whatever local decisions are made or provide more guidance on what's expected in competency determinations. I am a part of the Connecticut Valley Roundtable of Superintendents and the Urban Superintendent Network. And this is a discussion that comes up. There's definitely a lot of superintendents that are pushing the state to come up with guidance because we can come up with this guidance and then you see that another district is using MCAS. You see that another district could be using it, like, just so many different things. Superintendents across the state are looking for the state to provide some further guidance so that we have more, more consistency across the state about what it means to get a diploma.
That's it, thank you.
Seen no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, no, I don't know why I said that. I'm in favor.
So moved, motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Now, this is one that I'm hoping to, for, also for the school committee to weigh in on for future years. And I say this because as it stands right now, the Holyoke Public Schools is spending over a half a million dollars on Chapter Seventy-four application, on tuition, essentially. And what I have noticed is that different communities are, are applying what DESI's guidance and regulations are very differently, right? And I'll give you an example. Chicopee, they have a stance that if you're in ninth grade, we won't approve any Chapter Seventy-four applications unless it's in agriculture or animal science. If it's in those two shops, then they approve it. But if it's not in those two shops, regardless of whether or not you have the shop that the student is in, the, the trade that the student is interested in, their take is, and the DESI guidance is, that like, we are denying your application because we have an exploratory program and we know that when you go to ninth grade in Westfield, when you go in Smith-Vogue, there's an exploratory program there. And the law is pretty clear that if there's an exploratory program in your, in your community, that you have the right to deny the application. And they, it has to come to the district of residence, which I know it's also inconsistently applied in the school district that we're sending a lot of kids to. Because on one hand, they, they, in their own policy, they say that, you know, if you live outside of our, you know, of our community, then you have to take the exploratory program in the district that you reside. Yet, they are taking in ninth graders and putting them through the exploratory program. Because we don't have like, a, a true, like, stance on this, I am hoping that the school committee looks at this issue and applies, you know, this is how we're gonna do it here in Holyoke. We do have some students that say they want to go into agriculture and then they end up in cabinet making. So like, part of the discussion that I'd love to foster amongst this body is, how do you handle that situation? Are we then saying, because it's not agriculture, you have to come back? We're not approving paying the tuition for that, for, for, for that shop? Because you applied for agriculture, you ended up in, in another shop? The trick here, and I'll, I'll, I'll be honest, is like, the law is very specific and it talks about agriculture and animal sciences that like, that like, kinda like you have to approve those applications? And it doesn't say anything about other shops, right? And how we have been applying it in practice over the last few years is, even if you, like, if you, I wanna use graphic communications as an example. Because if we have a student that says they want agriculture, but they end up in graphic communications, I have not been saying, oh, well, it's, it's, it's not agriculture, so you gotta come back to Holyoke Public Schools. I have been approving it under the basis that we don't have graphic communications here in, in Holyoke. But, you know, the law doesn't really say exactly how to handle that situation. One, upon an application being denied, the family has the right to appeal that to the state. And my experience with that is if you don't have graphic arts, they're gonna overrule whatever decision that, that we make. So, all that to say that, you know, it's a significant budget item in, right now, over a half a million dollars. And I, I feel like I wanna take the ambiguity out of it and the grayness out of this. And I hope that the school committee would, you know, take this up, like, you know, I'm happy to provide the, you know, all the, the legal guidance that we got from the state, I, I did include that in your packet. And then, you know, apply it so that, you know, right now, we got some ninth graders that are going out, but Chicopee doesn't have any ninth graders right now. They, they say, yeah, we'll approve this, but for tenth grade.
Ms. Wilson?
So I'm going to have to remove myself from these conversations because I, I believe it's a conflict of interest for me since I am employed, probably by that district, where, since I work at agricultural and vocational school. The one thing I will add is that, as in many shops, shops fill up. So the opportunity for students to then transfer in sophomore year is much reduced, almost impossible, based upon numbers and wait lists that are currently in place. So I'm just sharing that if it does get put to the Policy and Governance Subcommittee, someone else would have to lead that conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Leon Martinez?
So I do have a question, I know that, that the, the reason that people or students or families decide to take out the kids and bring them to, take advantage of these courses, back in the days, we had agriculture. We have, we had graphic arts, we had other type of programs. What, so what's the possibility for us to have some of these again versus, you know, that would also attract other districts to come back in here? And I was part of some of the advisory boards back in the days that Dean had, for example. The machine shop, for example, that was removed and it's still, there's a need out there for, for CNC labor workers and seeing what the workforce is needing, that I think we should start considering some of that. So is it, what do you see?
Yeah, I mean, that, we have nine shops right now. When I was actually attending Dean, we had more, I was actually a gra, graphic arts student.
Right.
Had, what, I, I, it was called Building and Grounds. So that was, you know, they would, they would do a lot of the mulching and mowing and learn how to run your own landscaping business. We did have machine shop and metal fab and now we have Precision Technology. So it's, it's kind of morphed into, but the reason all that happened is because enrollment went down. Like, back when I was in school, we had, you know, eight hundred kids or so. And now we have just, uh, uh, just under four hundred. So as we, you know, as we get this new middle school and we move STEM out of the new middle school, we can start to begin having conversations about how do we want to grow? But I, I just caution, and we had this discussion in public before, that growing Dean has a, 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 a pretty significant impact on the offerings that are available at the North Campus. Right now, they have three academies, there's dual enrollment, there's a work-based learning program, there's the Holyoke Theater Company, there's like all these different things. But that's because Holyoke High has a thousand students. If we, if we say, okay, we're gonna take four hundred students out of Holyoke High and Dean's gonna have eight hundred students, like, the ability to, to offer all of those programs is gonna be very, very like resource-stricken. So the, the plan moving forward is, how do we grow Dean and expand? I know that one shop in particular that we're, we're very much interested in beginning to have conversations in is early childhood, like an early childhood center. So we're, we're starting to have conversations with, with DESI's Chapter Seventy-four office on like, what are the steps we need to take if we wanted to open a new shop? But we just, we really have to be thoughtful about how much we grow and how much more we want to offer. I know that, you know, the, the, I've been working, Sean's been working with the MetCaf Advisory Group. And there's been conversations about possibly moving, you know, some, some central office spaces over to Dean. So like, all those space things are, like, no decisions have been made. The, a, a group of them met and said, here are some things that we're recommending to the superintendent, which we're gonna be talking about at a, an upcoming joint committee meeting.
Can I just say something? I, I recall that, I'm one of those, at the time, we even did a visit to Worcester Vocational School, that they had the early childhood, they had the veterinary group, they had even the banking industry showing the, the students about that. And I thought that was, you know, I had hopes for that because I think we don't necessarily can, don't have to open it to a big number, but let's say you get twenty in the banking industry that is interested and you have to kinda apply and get on the waiting list. Another one, you know, for the early childhood and all of that, so that you don't, you know, so that those that are at the high school, don't you wanna jump onto this one? But at least a chance to see the, and I think it opens doors for all those districts to wanna come to us, you know?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Mayor Garcia?
On that note about other districts wanting to come to us, I think as, when, when we do get to a point where we start thinking about how to, how to evolve Dean and do more, I think the key thing is to think outside the box and see how we can compete regionally so that kids out of district would wanna, because I could tell you, Westfield-Vogue and, what's the other one? I think it's North Hampton, Smith-Vogue. They have kids from everywhere that are out of districts into their vocational programs. And, you know, I'd, I'd be curious to see that analysis, what is it that they do that we don't do? What can we be doing differently perhaps that they're not doing that might allow us to compete? But yeah, I wouldn't, you know, there's that thought, right? Like, yeah, we don't wanna, you know, we have some concern about North Campus, we, we don't wanna take away from what North Campus have to offer. But, you know, how do we kind of think outside the box and say, well, wait a minute, how do we make Dean the regional school where kids from everywhere would wanna come to? And take, how that looks like, I don't know, obviously, we gotta look into it, explore it.
Some of those communities don't have competing Chapter Seventy-four program. A lot of the kids that are going into those programs, they don't have a Chapter Seventy-four option in their home community. Like, we have Chicopee, we have Westfield, we have, Springfield has Putnam, like, all of, like, we're not pulling kids from there because they have their own programs. And I also wanna name, like, we have, like, before we start thinking about like, other communities and getting kids to come, we have about, you know, hundred and, hundred and, uh,
That are going to other communities.
Fifty of our own students that live in Holyoke that didn't, that are on a waitlist waiting to get into Dean. So like, I think that this, I don't wanna speak for you, but I would imagine that all of you would want those hundred and fifty kids to get a seat before we start saying, hey, Chicopee, come on, Westfield, come on, I don't wanna speak for you, but like, I think that should be our priority is like, how do we, like, shrink that waitlist for all these kids that are living in Holyoke and they wanna come to Dean, but there's not enough space?
Mr. Kennedy?
I just like to kind of respond to one of the committee members. We, we do, a big priority that we need to focus on is growing Dean. We cannot do that until we get our new middle school because STEM takes up our entire top floor with the exception of three classrooms, which is pretty huge, our library. One of our shop, one, one of our shop spaces, we have one, two, three vacancy, vacant shop spaces, and I believe one of those is even housed to some of our district administrators. Growing Dean needs to get done, but it can't get done until after we find a solution to all of those other situations. Receiver Soto talked about, like, we don't wanna take away from North Campus and that's, that's fair. But also, North Campus has a lot more opportunities than students here at Dean do academically. I can tell you that I'm in the difficult situation of applying to colleges right now and I'm applying to one of the most difficult bachelor's degrees you can possibly get. And I am far behind a lot of the people who are applying because I don't have all of those extra classes that North Campus provides. Yes, I, you know, I have all the amazing things that come from our vocational program, but a lot of the classes that North Campus has, I don't have the access to, right? And I didn't know that until I started applying everywhere. So we, we definitely need to grow Dean, both academically and vocationally, but we can't do that until we find a solution to, well, we have a solution, to put the students in the new middle school and, you know, get our administrators' offices.
Thank you so much. Can you give us a, an example of what the classes would be that you wish you could have?
Well, currently, our only three science classes right now are, excuse me, biology, sorry, yes, biology, chemistry and environmental science. Those are the only three classes and they're basic, the most basic classes you can get, for science anyway. And I'd really like to see that expanded because, you know, I'm, I'm going into the medical field and a lot of people who applied before me have all these like AP this, AP that. I don't even know the names of the classes, but my unit, but we, like, we don't have access to those. We just have like the very basic classes and that's fine for, you know, just a vocational school. But we are also aiming towards academic success rather than just the trade. And I can go in more in-depth with it through like an email or something when I, you know.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, I'm just gonna respond to Mr. Kennedy that it, it's not fine. And, and I, I don't mean to push that back on you, but it's not fine. I mean, we, it's been the long debate that there needs to be equity in the buildings. And just because it all is technically one school, we kind of meet that. But the students here on this campus need to be having the same access to the same types of courses. Because if we, we can build- Here on this campus need to be having the same access to the same types of courses because if we, we can build. Our vocational areas up as much as we can and have people going out with. Career-recognized standards, but if those same students can't get into competitive colleges, then that's a problem too. Um, so I think that we need to really refocus on that, which is, I kinda think the point that. Mister Soto was making, that like, before we think about. All these different things for Dean, we need to focus on Dean and what's going on at Dean at this point. And like, it, it would be great to have. Programs like Westfield has aviation, and I mean, we're, we're never gonna get a farm science program at Dean, I don't think. But it would be great to have some, an innovative program that draws from other communities, because that's what you need. I mean. Early childhood isn't gonna draw kids from other communities because other communities are opening that up, but we, we need to focus on what we, we have here first. Um, because we're not there yet. It's not, it's not just if we opened up a new program. Would kids wanna come from another district? Because if we're still not providing the other. Things, then it's, it's just not, it's not gonna work. So I think that's more of the challenge. And I, I will say just to, because. I think we could go on a lot about what needs to change with some of that, but I think that first and foremost is the superintendent needs. Some guidance and a policy about, um. Students exiting Chapter Seventy Four programs into other districts, and I think that's the point here. Um, I. I don't know, I, I mean, it needs to be a direct policy, but I also understand there's a direct conflict on the. On, on the committee that we would send it to. So I will make a motion to send it to a committee. I guess I just need some guidance. Are we? Okay with that and just having Ms. Wilson step aside for the other two members? Is that?
I mean, I can, I can seek legal opinion, I mean, because I, I can keep it separate, I, you know, and. But I think I would just have to go to legal counsel to, to find out if. Because I believe there is a true conflict of interest.
I'll make the motion in a second, and I would just say, not even legal counsel, just call state ethics. They'll tell you, and they'll tell you what form to fill out, so. I'll make a, a motion to send the Chapter Seventy Four. Chapter Seventy Four Program, uh, Presentation, um, Procedures to the Policy and Governance Subcommittee.
Should be made by Mister Sheen, seconded by Mister Sasa. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great, uh, the next item in, in the superintendent report uh came from. Uh, our initial uh central off, our initial panorama results presentation. Um, and uh. You know, what we had done with our own panorama data is we, we, as a cabinet, we reviewed it and reflected, and that, that's just, that's. Has been common practice over the last, you know, since panorama has come out. All principals do that with their own data and Central Office does that with their own data. I, I included in your packet an email that went out to staff today. Um, that, you know, we, we did have a central office. You know, kinda equity session and uh kinda feedback session. Where we shared some panorama data with them and tried to solicit some group discussions around. How could we make some of these things better? People had a lot to say about, and, and you saw that in the results. They had a lot to say about the evaluation process, and they had a lot to say about coaching and feedback. And they had a lot to say about technology and the facilities, like. Uh, so we focused on those three things in the discussion and got a lot of feedback from. Our staff and, and what, what we're hearing is that staff wanna feel more appreciated. And that they feel like a lot of connectedness within their own department. But, um, you know, the special ed department and the academic department, they don't necessarily feel connected. Um, in a way, and that they, they appreciate opportunities like the one. You know, thank you to the mayor for allowing us to use that space. Um, last week, we were able to bring everybody from Central Office and Central Supply together. And uh, Lee, uh, Doc, uh, Mister Mogle led an equity session. We had breakout groups, people were able to interact with people from other departments. And they really appreciated that, and we've been doing that. They're just asking for us to do more of that. Over the years, like, I think a lot of conversation has come up about Central Office, like, folks just feel like. You know, it's not our, it's, it's not our building and it's just not a, you know, state-of-the-art facility and, and like, there's more we can do, so. We have done, you know, we've scheduled some deep cleans, we've worked with the landlord to make sure that. You know, they're addressing some of our concerns that come up. We have over the last five years. You know, when, when a lot of our, a lot of our furniture is like, you know, thirty, forty years old, we've, we've been little by little trying to chip away. So that, you know, the, the staff see all the furniture that we're purchasing at schools and things that we're doing at schools. Um, they're like, hey, how about us? Like, this desk, my knees are like touching. So like, we've, we've done a lot of, of that, we've done some painting, I've worked with Appleton back in the day during the pandemic. Where we were able to work together and. Windows didn't open at the time, we were able to like get some windows that actually open. And during COVID, that was a, a huge uh thing. We, you know, if you go to Central Office now, you'll see pictures of students. Like, there's little things that we're trying to do to make that space work for our staff. And there's also some things that we've done, and you can see in the letter around, abo- around benefits and compensation. Based on results that we got from panorama staff. You know, we really di- did a deep dive into all of the open-ended comments, we did a deep dive into all the questions. And based on that, we've been chipping away and, and being responsive. But uh, the things that continue to persist are, you know, staff just wanting to. You know, hear a thank you every now and then and fe- and have their work recognized. Um, some of the things that I, I know that I need to do better. I've been going out to schools and recognizing teachers and recognizing students for great work through an awa- award. Program that we have, I, I need to also apply that to our central office staff when they're going above and beyond and doing the things. I need to acknowledge them, and I'm asking all of my leaders to do the same. It doesn't have to be, you know, Anthony's gonna show up and. And give you an award, like, what are you doing with your staff to show them? Um, when they're doing really good work, to recognize their work and, and like, you know, say, uh praising them for it. And then, um, around the cross-departmental connection, we're gonna continue to try to create those opportunities for staff. And around the evaluation, we're, we're looking to increase the amount of feedback that staff are getting, like. You know, I can tell you from experience that when I was in, in, in my previous role. You know, we did an evaluation at the end of the year, and at that evaluation, we set goals for the upcoming year. But there wasn't, you know, the, the, the real-time feedback was really in the moment, it wasn't necessarily a structured process. And I'm hoping to create a more structured process so that staff, you know, we have a mid-year checking at a minimum, like, here's where you're trending. Here are some strengths, here are some things that I want you to work on, so it's not like, wait till the evaluation comes up and boom. Here's how you did for the whole year, um, and I'm hoping that that has an impact on, on future results that we. Uh, that we uh get, or future surveys that, that staff take. Um, and then the last piece is the capital plan. And I, I just wanna thank uh Sean Mangano and Sean Sheedy for all the work that went into this. Really proud of this draft that we now have in front of us. Um, it has kind of a profile of where we're at. With all of our buildings, like, how old the building is, how old the boilers are, how old the windows are. And you can kinda see a heat map of where we were, you know, uh, seven years ago and where we are now. And we, we used to be like really red in every single one of our buildings. And you see, you're starting to see a lot of green, because we're working on making sure that. You know, taking the uh, taking the opportunities that we have through the MSBA program. Taking the opportunities that we had with ESER funding and making sure that like. Using tho- that one-time funding to, to make sure that we're investing in our spaces and not just like. Deferring all this maintenance that has been happening for many, many, many years in our buildings. Um, there's pictures in there of some of the work that we've already done. You know, replacing playgrounds, replacing courtyards, replacing windows, replacing heater, uh, uh boiler rooms. Um, but uh, this is a draft right now. This, uh, the one that we had, I, I admittedly wasn't as good as this one. It's still a living document, like, as, as new things come up, new priorities come up, we wanna make sure that we regularly update this plan. Um, but this also is something that, as part of the local, uh. The local control kind of uh plan that we have, one of the action steps was that we were gonna work together to create this. Uh, capital plan, so I've shared a copy with all of you in your packet, and um, I'm sure. That uh, you know, this probably will get referred to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee, but.
Mister Willian.
Thank you, Mrs. Soto. Um, yeah, I, I know we talked about the heat map before, um, I know, um. That was discussed at length at, um, one of the finance. Meetings, um, same topic is gonna be on the agenda for the next, um. Joint meeting for the schools and, and the um city council, so that's on Wednesday night. Um, I know because, um, we have to keep the city council as a partner. Our, in our school building, because um, some of the funding has to go through them, so, thank you again.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, Mister Sheen.
Was there a motion needed? I'll make a motion to send the.
Second.
Plan to Finance Operations.
Second. Motion by Mister Sheen, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you so much. Moving on to Vice Chair Report. There we have the. Letter from the Commissioner from last meeting that I read to you, so you have an actual copy on the record of the letter that was. Moved to receive by Mister Sheen, seconded by Ms. Leroy Martinez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Next up, we have the letter from the Commissioner about negotiations received in January twenty ninth.
Move to receive.
Second.
Moved to receive by Mister Sheen, seconded by Ms. Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. So next up, we have a communication from the commissioner, that, the commissioner that we don't have in the packet, but we have in front of us. That's the copy that you have in front of you, and this is. The communication for collective, collective bargaining negotiations with the Holyoke Teachers Association. And this is uh, to, for the school committee to vote in a, in a limited way.
To receive.
Second.
Moved to receive by Mister Sheen, Sheen, who seconded? Mister Colomore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Now, we are doing our discussion for the next steps in the hiring process of the interim superintendent. And at this point, I would like to appoint Mister Sheen. To bring a draft back for interim superintendent negotiations for the full sc- school committee. To review at our next executive committee session.
And so I'm just clarifying, you said at the next executive session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Onto new business, we have approval of, oh, I should ask, Mister Sheen, did you accept? Thank you. Moving on to new business, approval of meeting minutes. We have, our first one is.
Motion to take as a package.
Checking.
Motion to take as a package by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mister Colomore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion, I should have said first, but. So moved. Right, so taken as a package, the approval of meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah, see, discussion on that. Mister Willian.
Um, I was reading the minutes for our last meeting for. Full, the full committee and I think they mentioned that there was no. Student report for Dean or through um, Holyoke High. And there was, so I don't know if we can.
I'm gonna amend my motion to take all except for the one thirteen twenty-five school committee.
Yeah, have a second.
My second.
Mister Colomore seconds. On the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. As amended. Go to approve.
Aye.
Go to approve the group?
Yes. As amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Move to table the January thirteenth.
Second.
By Mister Sheen, seconded by Ms. Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to Updates on Committees, Policy and Governance Subcommittee.
Thank you. Um, so unfortunately, um, we're having to cancel uh our meeting scheduled for tomorrow because the facilitator. Um, eh, um, from MASC um is ill. Um, so we will be rescheduling that as soon as possible. Um, and so, uh, just so we're aware, um. If we had had the meeting tomorrow, we're at about a hundred and fifty policies. Um, as a subcommittee that have been reviewed, um, just so everyone's aware, we've been making significant progress. Um, and, um, the next meeting after this one, um, I have asked, uh, Mister Soto. To provide in, um, someone or individuals to the meeting because we're gonna be going over. The two largest sections of policies, uh, which is instruction and students. Um, I is first, so we'll be going through as much of that as possible. Um, and that is scheduled to take place in March, um, but just so everyone, just to keep abreast of that. Um, so, thank you. This, um, this upcoming meeting is not, we're doing G and A, B, C, D, E, F. G, H, yeah, I still say the alphabet, sorry, um, G, H, um, this up. At the next meeting that needs to be rescheduled, and the meeting after that, we're gonna be hitting the. As we would say, the meat and potatoes when it comes to instruction and students. You're welcome.
Next up, we have Finance and Operations Subcommittee, and thank you for, um, the summary, Mister Willian.
Oh, my homework, no problem. I got on it, I got on it quick. I noticed that, I got my name quick. The wrath, the wrath of the chair. Thank you, um. We have our, I'm trying to schedule a meeting for our next, um, Finance and Operations to, for February. Um, twenty-seventh at five thirty at, um. Fifty-seven Suffolk Street.
Thank you, Mister Willian. Next up, Joint City Council School Committee.
Excuse me. Yes, I have the minutes of that meeting, and uh, if you have, did everyone get a copy of this?
No, the minutes, um, those will be reviewed and approved by the joint um committee, um, which is meeting on February twelfth at uh six-thirty. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Local Control Subcommittee. Chair of that subcommittee is not here, but is, is any of the members have any updates?
All I know is that the next meeting is February nineteenth at five o'clock, and that is only gonna be um remote.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And that was scheduled, I know it's school vacation week, but that's the only date that could work with the commissioner's schedules, though.
Again, Leadership Accountability and Measurement.
So we do have a meeting scheduled for February twenty-fifth at four o'clock at the Hoyokai School Conference Room, and it was to discuss the um credit policy at Hoyokai, but I think we can probably add in the newest item that just came to us regarding um uh graduation requirement, competency requirements, just to deal with those, probably best to do that at that point as well if Mr. Soto.
So at this point, announcements have been posted on the agenda for multiple events. Please be on the lookout for that, and we have made it to the end of our agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn? Go ahead, Mr. Sheen.
Um, I'll make a motion to enter Executive Session. Best strategies with respect to collective bargaining, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the bargaining position of the public body for the purpose of the Hoyok Teachers Association, and not to return to open session.
All those in favor? Oh, vocal vote, yes. Ms. Feliciano, vocal.
Sorry, that was a long one. Um, Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Dr. Reckelone?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave? Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
C.
Mr. Orlando, is that, Mr. Land? Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Mr. Kennedy?
No, after, after this is confirmed.
Motion carries.
Oops, sorry. I'd just like to bring everyone's attention to the announcements really quick. As you can all see, the community advisory team is meeting on the twenty-fourth of February. I highly advise the committee members to watch that meeting, um, because you will all be taking control of the district in the near future, and I think it's important that you all see the um, the opinions of the people in the meeting, because yes, you do have people here who will, you know, bring you what we said in the meeting, but there's a lot of very good discussion that can go on when we exit receivership that I think that all of you could, you know, benefit from watching, so if you have a couple of minutes, please watch on that meeting.
Thank you.